All right, you're all set.
Okay. All right, I'm going to call the meeting to order. This is September fourteenth, meeting of the ZBA. So I'll start by, since this is a remote meeting on Zoom, I'm going to call the role of the members. Mr. Andrews?
Yeah.
Mr. Keenan?
Yeah.
Mr. Chandler?
Yeah.
Mr. Ketchatory?
Yeah.
Mr. Blaz?
Yeah.
Uh, Mr. Gomedy is absent and myself, John Gold Rosen, I'm here. We also have with us, um, the building inspector Bob Curran and the Secretary Carol O'Brien. So the, uh, to call the hearing to order, this is case number nine, three eighty-two Washington Street. This is a continuation of the hearing, which was originally scheduled for August twenty-fourth. Uh, we had to continue the hearing due to a lack of quorum. And present at the hearing that it's all that we did that night was I read the, um, the application into the record. I, uh, read the list of abutters and we did not go further because of the lack of quorum. Um, we did have the applicants present, uh, the two applicants present, the owners of the property at three eighty-two Washington Street. We also had two abutters present, uh, who, and one of them had communicated pre- beforehand with a letter and, um, let me, let me try to get up the, um, I'm gonna share to see if I can get the, uh, the plan on the screen. Okay, so can everybody see the, uh, the plan on the screen?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Okay, so, um, the two abutters who were present, one was, uh, uh, Ms. Candura, who owns the property behi- up into the left of, uh, the applicant's property and you can see there's a, a right-of-way leading to her property. And the other person who was present, Mr. Murphy and, um, Ms. Keen, who I believe is a sister, they own property, a piece of property which is behind what's shown as the town of Whitman property, just behind the applicant's property. Uh, they own land up there, which also borders on that right-of-way. And Mr. Murphy seemed in his letter to be concerned that the applicant's project was going to impinge on this right-of-way. Um, and after that meeting, I, you know, I sent him the plan, um, to make sure he had it and, you know, communicated to him that it didn't look like there was any problem with the, the, the project. And I haven't turned back from him. I, I asked him to get back to me directly if, if he could explain what his issue was, uh, because I haven't looked at his, his deed to see what, what rights he has, but I'm just assuming because his property is otherwise landlocked, that he must have some right to use that right-of-way to the left of the applicant's property. So that's by way of background, so the issue for us tonight is whether to, to go ahead and hear this, even though the applicant, applicants aren't present. I kind of feel like we should because, um, they were here last time. I'm concerned that they might have had difficulty figuring out how to get into this meeting since it's a different, um, a different, uh, ID number to get in. And, um, just trying to see if I can, if I can see the rest of you folks while I still have the map on the screen, maybe not. Um, anyway, that's, you know, I, I mean, I'm in, in the, in the absence, uh, I'll, I'll, I'll read what they want to do, uh, and I do have a letter from the planning board, so I'll read that into the record too. But, uh, appreciate people letting me know whether, you know, I, I hate to continue it again. Um, and we didn't have, we didn't have a phone number or some other way to reach the applicant, but we would have reached out to them. So the, the reason for asking relief is they, they want, uh, it's from section five, five dash four B nine, which is for a daycare and section seven, seven dash two, which is site plan approval. Reason for asking relief, proposed use of a daycare is allowed by special permit. Applicant is converting existing two-car garage into a daycare nursery with outside fence play area. Existing driveway is being revamped for drop-off parking. Um, so before we go any further, what's, what's the sense of the board and whether to, uh, go ahead and take action on this? Or, I mean, we could at least go proceed, discuss it among ourselves, and if we have questions, put it over, continue it again and get the applicant before us, but, uh, what, what do people think?
Yeah. John, this is the-
Go ahead.
Um-
Yep.
In, yeah, in my humble opinion, um, we need as many daycares as we can possibly get. Um, they're vital to the community and, uh, we don't have enough of them. So unless there are objections from, um, from interested parties and, or if there, there's any things, any safety issues, as long as, um, a- as long as the, the, the plan as presented to us, um, looks acceptable, I have no issue with moving forward, um, and, and potentially voting for or against it, uh, moving forward, at least I think, to hear the case.
All right. Uh, I'll just go by roll call, since it's so difficult otherwise to do this. Uh, Mr. Andrews, any, any comments on the, just the issue of whether to go ahead and proceed with this?
Well, I have no problem with going ahead, but I, I do have a list of five or six questions that I wanted to, to ask the applicant. Uh, they're pretty much fifteen questions, but, uh, uh, if the, if the board feels we should go ahead, uh, maybe we can discuss it among ourselves and, uh, satisfy the questions.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Chandler?
Um, I'm content with going ahead with this.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I, and I had not announced who would be sitting on, so that'll be Mr. Andrews, Mr. Chandler, and Mr. Blaz, uh, and Mr. Keenan and myself, John Gold Rosen. Uh, Mr. Keenan, anything?
No, the only thing is if they do have a problem after the fact, they still have that twenty-day appeal period, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So that gives them a little safety net.
Right, and Carol, uh, let's make sure in this case that we, if, if we decide this tonight, that we send out a notice, we notify not just the applicant, but also the, the people who are present, the abutters who were present at the last meeting, and let them know when the decision is filed, just in case.
Okay.
All right.
Yes.
Which we ought to do as a matter of course anyway, but let's, let's make sure we do that here. Okay, um, Mr. Ketchatory, I was actually thinking I would not involve you in this. Um-
That sounds good.
Because, yeah, okay. All right, uh, so, uh, Mr. Curran, can you? Have you had communications with the applicant, the, you know, can you give us any insight on what they're proposing to do?
No, I've been by the property. I haven't been in the barn. Um, I did have a couple of concerns regarding this, but I think they're gonna be brought up while you, um, conduct your hearing.
Okay, okay. Um, so, Mr. Andrews, why don't you go ahead and, and, uh, so let's, let's go ahead with it and, uh, you know, if something comes up where we really feel we can't properly make a decision or put conditions that would address the questions, then we'll, we'll just have to continue it, but let's go ahead for now. So, Mr. Andrews?
Well, one, one of the questions I had is, uh, like Mr. Curran, I've been, I took a ride by there three or four times. And, uh, one of the questions I had is, uh, the garage doors, I'm assuming are gonna be removed and replaced by an entrance on the right side of the, uh, where the garage doors are now. I'm assuming that's what's gonna be done according to the site plan.
Um, I'm blowing up, go ahead, go ahead, Wayne, I'm blowing up the plan. Okay, it, I just blew up the plan. I don't know if you people can see that I blew it up, and it says garage doors to be removed.
Right, and-
And-
And I'm assuming there's gonna be a door on the right-hand side as an entrance.
Yeah, it says EX door, so that's exterior door, I assume, at the right-hand corner of the garage.
There's also a door on the left side of the building at the backside. I'm assuming that's gonna be the door into the playground area.
Yep, that, I, I see it says proposed door right at the corner of the playground.
Right. Uh, uh, the other, I, I think one of the other things, uh, uh, is there going to be a gate access to the play area or no gate? The only access going to be the, uh, the left side of the garage, that door at the back? Is that gonna be the only access door to the play area?
Yeah, 'cause it's just showing a proposed fence around it. Uh, Bob Curran, can you, just from the building code point of view, what, what kind of access and egress do you need for a facility like this, for the building, for the playground?
Um, whereas the occupancy will be less than seventy-five, thirty-six inch doors are fine. Um, the door on the back left side of the garage will go into the playground. They will need another way out. They'll need another gate to get people away from the building. Um, but that could be on a special latch device that, um, would require an, an adult to open?
From the, you know, from the, if everybody's in the playground, they need a way to get out of there in an emergency, so-
Yeah, and go towards the road.
Okay.
Right, so that, that could be a condition then.
But, yeah, then, and they could use a barrier-type gate that they have on swimming pools where the, the latch releases at fifty-four inches above grade.
Okay.
All right, and what, would, would it be a chain-link fence or would it be a, a star gate? And how high would it be, about four feet high?
It would likely be a four-foot black vinyl fence. Uh, you could specify that. I don't think it would be higher than that.
Okay. Uh, another question I had, uh, on the site plan, there's a parking spaces for four cars. And as you know, driving by there, there's room for more. Should there not be more, uh, parking spots? Uh, because I would assume, uh, depending on the number of children, they have to have employees and they would have to be parking for the employees. And also, what about the, uh, uh, the size of the parking spaces? Are they gonna be required to have the traditional ten-by-twenty's or are they gonna, do they wanna reduce area of eight-by-eighteen?
Well, they haven't asked for, you know, relief from that, so, from the parking spaces.
If they're gonna have a few children, they're gonna need at least one, maybe two employees, and then they would need parking for them also.
Yeah, those, those spaces, um, scale out to ten-by-twenty.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, do you, do you think four spaces would be sufficient for that?
There is a daycare similar to this in Hanson off of George Street.
Yeah.
Um, and, and I've been by, fortunately, when I get out to do my inspections over there, it's typically the afternoon between four and five. Um, I've been there when parents are picking up the kids. Um, what they'll do here is they'll pull in two at a time and the, they, the kids come, the, the teachers usually bring the kids right out to the cars. And so they'll be there for a matter of two minutes. Um, unless there's some kind of an event going on there, um, I wouldn't expect it to be a problem. There is, um, the ability to park on street in case something happens like a, a grandparents' night or something similar to that. But I think that what's there now is sufficient.
All right.
What it shows on the plan.
Okay, uh, another question I had, uh, I'm assuming they know what a huge amount of work they're gonna have to do on the inside. Uh, I was just concerned about the layout, such as maybe the, the type of flooring, uh, a bathroom, uh, a nap or sleeping area. Uh, you know, would it be air-conditioned and heating? I would think they would have to address all of those questions by you, right?
Yeah, they, they will have to get inspected by the state. So the way this works is, once they have finished everything that, that is on, that's required to obtain an occupancy permit for that space, they will get a certificate of occupancy from me and then they have to send that to the state. And the ECC will come out and do their own inspections. And there's certain requirements that they have to abide by, and typically, they're pretty strict.
Yeah, okay.
And so do, do they, do they know those requirements ahead of time, Bob? So they, they build it correctly?
Yeah, I'm sure that that's why they're at the zoning board of appeals, is they've checked with ECC already and they say, they, they guide them on what typically happens in each town. Um, and ECC knew, knew what Whit, what Whitman would require.
All right.
All right, the only other question, probably doesn't make much sense, but, uh, I was just curious about the days of operation and the hours and, uh, the approximate number of children they were planning on handling and, uh, the number of, uh, uh, caretakers they would need to help, that's all. But, uh-
Yeah.
Other than those questions, which are all pretty much standard, uh, driving by there that, those three times I did, I don't see any problem with it. They've got plenty of room in the back if they need it for, for anything. They've got plenty of room on the other side of the building. And, uh, the lot size is, you know, is a lot more than, than what's required for the area, so I don't really have any, uh, any other problem. And the, the, the building itself seems to be in pretty good shape. So I think I'm all set that way, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you. Mr. Blaz?
Um, thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm, I mean, I'm similar to, to what Wayne had to say. Um, so much of, but, uh, any kind of question that I might have would, is already or will be addressed by the building commissioner, the state building code, the board of health, um, and any state regulatory agency. I think what, probably what we're being asked to do is, um, is decide whether or not this location is suitable for a, a daycare, um, uh, a daycare center or day, daycare, whatever they, they call this. Um, you know, there's no strip clubs next door. Um, it's not a fifty-five mile an hour, um, street going by, you know, thing, things, things like that. Um, but, but, uh, a, a question I have is, um, what's the difference between this, um, daycare that's being requested and a, um, this is what, site plan approval and special permit?
Yeah.
So what's the difference between a neighbor mother with two kids of her own, watching two kids legally, um, yeah, with state, um, knowledge, um, versus this place that, um, is gonna do a build-out?
But Bob, is there like a minimum number of children that, you know, at, at, at that point, you need to get a state license?
Yeah, I think it's less than five. You can do it from a home. Um, this is going to be a daycare center. Um, and just to go on, I think chapter forty-eight, John, you know better than I do, um, talks about, um, no, reasonable accommodations for this. And I think that, um, you know, I think this may qualify for exemption from zoning.
Right, but I think, yeah, I mean, I think as long as you have a special permit procedure, that's probably-
Yeah, and I think that's why we have-
That's reasonable regulation, right.
Yeah, I think that's reasonable. Um, the, the big thing here is, um, the stuff that I can foresee as being an issue with the neighbors is going to be thirty kids out in that playground screaming and yelling. I think that maybe you ought to consider, whereas the applicant's not here, we have no idea how many-
I believe the applicant has joined. Uh, sorry to interject.
Oh, wonderful.
I am here.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Would, would you introduce yourself, because I butchered your name last time, so I'm not even gonna try this time. Just introduce yourself to the members of the board.
My name is Mari. How is there? I live on three eighty-two Washington Street, Whitman, Massachusetts.
Okay, thank you. And, okay, so we had, uh, we started to discuss this because even though you weren't here, we felt it was fair to go ahead and, and, uh, discuss it. So I think the, uh, the main, can everybody still see the plan? I'm sort of, I've seen everybody's faces now and not the plan. Is everybody else seeing the plan?
No, no, we've got your phone.
Uh, let me see how to, um-
We have copies in our packets too, John.
I do have-
Yeah. Yeah. Let me just, uh- Okay, we got the plan back up?
Yes.
Okay, good. Um, so here are the, most of the questions, well, let, let me ask you a series of questions and so we can get some of the details. How many children, what would be the, the most number of children that you would be having at this daycare?
The maximum is ten, but I am eligible for six to stay by myself because at the beginning and then be able to practice this, I'll start with this number, which is number six.
Okay.
Or they consider my experiences, they may give me on my license, if he says so, it may be eight, otherwise it's six, for sure.
Okay, all right, so that, that's helpful because we weren't sure how many, how many children would be on, on the property at a time. And that helps us in terms of the, uh, understanding the number of parking spaces. Um, Mr. Andrews, I, I'll, I'll go back to you. Any, any, any question, other questions to ask the applicant or?
Well, would she have to have any, uh, any, uh, helpers or daycare help, you know, employees to help with the children?
Right, will you have any employees besides yourself?
If they give me, if my, my license say I have eight children, the agents also give me assistance from neighbor school. I'm with them right now. So I will need assistance if I have eight children.
Okay.
And of course, I can stay by myself.
Okay, so the most, um, because when we're looking at the parking spaces, so you would only need one parking space for another adult and the other parking spaces would be for the parents picking up and dropping off the children? Is that right?
I have four parking lot right now, which is ready.
Okay. Um, we also talked about the, um, the fence. What would, what would the fence around the playground look like? What did you have in mind for that?
Yeah, it would be four to six and, and six car. And I go according to, uh, agency, what is the requirement says so because the Torah, the Torah does what is the requirement of all the surprise for the daycare. I'm aware of everything, but it's four to six feet tall.
Okay, and what would it be?
It will have, it will have to exit in the case of emergency. Maybe they would, I need, I have a, my contractor will, will be in charge of that. I made sure that you do the right one because the inspection will come and check if I'm wrong, all right? So I made sure that it's the right one.
We, we, we have the building inspector, Mr. Curran, also on the, uh, who's at the, on the hearing, and, uh, he did say you would need sort of an emergency exit from the playground that could be open, you know, a, a gate that could be opened by an adult, not by a child. So you would have to have that. Um, and would the, would the fence be vinyl or chain-link? Do you, do you know what you would do for the fence?
I think, I think it would come protection or the vinyl, maybe vinyl, I'm not sure. One of that.
Yeah. I mean, I think you would, you would want something that people could not see into the playground, I think.
Yes, for protection of the children.
Right, right. Um, Mr. Andrews, anything else?
No, I think, I think we discussed it during our discussion. I think you satisfied me.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Blaz, let me go back to you then. Uh, anything more that you'd like to bring up?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The, uh, proposed parking spaces, the additional four spaces, will those be paved?
It's already paved.
Oh, it's already paved? Oh, okay, so, 'cause I'm looking at, on Google Maps and on Google Maps, that portion of the driveway that was gonna have the extra twenty feet, um, of parking spaces, I didn't s- it's not on Google Maps and I didn't notice it when I drove by.
It's already done because I know that you may say, where are the parking? No, I did.
Okay, so the driveway is, is forty feet, is forty feet wide? Where, um, in the middle of the park, halfway to the house, it's forty feet wide?
The driveway was already made. What I did, I added the parking lot four car, for the four car and the each car have the nine wide and the twenty-two, uh, there.
Long, but, but is, you're saying that's already paved?
Yes.
Okay, I didn't, when I drove by this evening, I didn't notice that portion being paved. Okay, okay. Um, then another question, um, are you the owner of three eighty-two Washington Street or are you a renter?
I am the owner with my husband Jeremy. He's around me here.
Okay, so that is your husband Jeremy, okay. Um, excellent, thank you. And then, um, is this a one-family home or a two-family home?
One-family home.
Okay, very good. I just want all that for the record.
Right.
Okay, um, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Blaz. Mr. Chandler, any questions? Mr. Chandler, can you hear me? Jim? Chandler, can you hear me?
Jeremy or Chandler?
Jeremy.
You're both Jeremy or the chairman?
Uh, James Chandler. Can you?
Sorry.
Can you hear me, Jim? We're not hearing you.
I think he's got Comcast.
Okay. I think he had trouble last time.
Maybe he needs us?
Yeah. I think, I think, I think he had-
Can you hear me, Mr. Ro- Mr. Gold Rosen?
We can hear you now, Jim, but it's, um- Okay, try again.
Hello?
Okay, ta- tell everybody else in the house not to use, uh, the internet for anything.
Mr. Gold Rosen, can you hear me?
Yes.
It's, it's my cable.
Yeah.
Well, I'm-
Do you have any?
I am here.
Do you have any questions?
All right, the only question I have. I'm the only one. Can you hear me now?
It's, it's blurry. Go ahead, go ahead, Jim.
The only question I have is, is there any reason for any parking space to be that accessible?
I'm sorry, is there any reason for any parking space to be, what was? Okay. Okay. Uh, Mr. Keenan?
The only question I have is, the daycare is gonna be confined to just the first floor of the garage?
Yes.
Nothing on the second floor at all?
No.
What's on the second floor now?
It's my bedroom.
Okay. That's all I have.
Okay.
I have no questions.
Okay, thank you. Um, I have a couple more questions. Um, where will, where will your own cars- Where will, where will your own cars be parked?
My, my own cars, I have on the other side, the back of my house. There is not.
Oh, you, you, you have like a driveway to the back of your house?
Yeah, there is a way to reach there, behind, yes.
Okay, and another question we had was, what will the hours of op, days and the hours of operation be for the daycare?
Hours uh, 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 two minutes. Seven thirty or neighbor school maybe give me new schedule. Or Mr. Robert told me that you have new schedule. I'm ready to listen, whatever you plan for me. But neighbor school also give me schedule to follow. It may be seven thirty or area than that, seven depends on the need of the parents.
Right.
I'm here to serve the parents. Any parents who need area dropping, I'm available. But I'll be in touch with you at it, you know, the right time, but seven thirty to five thirty.
Okay, and I didn't, I didn't hear, is it just Monday through Friday?
Yes.
Okay. All right, um, let's see, I do have a letter from the planning board to read. At the January twenty-third, twenty-twenty meeting, the board reviewed the plan for three eighty-two Washington Street. The planning board recommends approval for relief from section five, five dash four B nine, this special permit requirement, but had no recommendation for waiver from section seven, seven dash two site plan approval. Sincerely, Eric Pretorius, Chairman. Um, and just to the applicant, I, I will say, uh, if you recall at the last hearing, uh, which we were not able to, to open and really take testimony on, the uh, the two of the abutters sort of to the rear of your property were present. Um, that's Mr. Murphy and um, let's see, give me a second. Uh, Miss Condory. Condory, right. I think they're, and they're not on the line tonight. So um, I think their concern had to do with, especially where they had not yet seen the plan and all they knew of the application was the notice that they got. I think they were concerned about any um, any part of the activity going into that right-of-way that's to the left of your property. But I did, um, I know I sent Mr. Murphy the plan, I may not have done that with Ms. Condory, but I, I sent him the plan uh, to show him that the location of the playground and parking and so forth is entirely within three eighty-two Washington Street. And they are not present tonight and he did not communicate further with me. I told him to get in touch with me if he still had issues. So um, you know, I'm going to take that as best we can as meaning that we've uh, we addressed their concerns by making sure they understood that all of the uh, the work here will be within the boundaries of three eighty-two Washington Street. All right, um, is there anything further from members of the board? Again, just to make it easier, I'm gonna go in order, Ms. Andrews.
Uh, yes, I, I, I didn't, I didn't hear what the applicant said for uh, the days are gonna be Monday to Friday and what were the hours of operation?
I think seven thirty to five, is that correct?
Five thirty.
Seven thirty to five thirty, okay.
That's just Monday to Friday, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, I, I just wasn't, I didn't understand what, what was said. That's fine, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Blaz, anything further?
No, I don't have, um, don't believe so, but maybe one question. Will, will the children ever be going on um, for walks to town park or anything? I see that there is a sidewalk there.
No, no, for this time, no. And uh, would be, it's a family childcare. My job is to take care of them at my house. What we can do if they need, no, we not go outside.
Okay, very good, and then one last question, and I think I know the answer, but I just wanna get it on the record. There is no swimming pool, correct?
No, no swimming pool.
Very good, thank you, I'm all set, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Mr. Chandler, anything further?
Um, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Emergency for all everybody in the town. In the case of the town have emergency, where is the location? We can go as emergency location.
No.
No?
Mr. Curran, can you, can you answer the?
I'm sorry, would you repeat?
In the case of emergency, for the whole town and neighborhood, where do we go?
In case of emergency?
For everybody, yeah.
They would, I think she's talking about maybe a storm shelter or something.
Yeah.
That, that would be announced at the time of the emergency. Um, it might be the um, high school.
High school, huh?
Yeah.
Okay, because I have to answer that question to neighbor school. I have it.
Yeah, you, you, yeah, I think the best thing to do with that is to check with the fire chief.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, yeah, check with the fire department, they, they would be best able to answer it.
Yeah, maybe the armory.
Okay.
Um. Let's see, Mr. Keeman, anything further?
Uh, the only other question I have is, what is the actual size of the fenced-in playground?
The size is five to six feet tall.
Now, how, what's the area?
The area is nine hundred square feet. It's maximum instead of seven hundred, seven and fifty, seven hundred and fifty, but I have enough, nine hundred square feet.
I just wanna know how close you're gonna be to your property line with the fence.
It looks like, looks like thirty by thirty.
Yeah, it looks like about twenty, I'm, I'm, I'm judging it at about twenty feet as its closest point to that right-of-way. Just looking, I'm looking at the size of the parking spaces and just kinda scaling it off.
It's thirty by, um, thirty by twenty-eight.
Okay.
Okay.
Alright.
That's all I have, thank you.
Okay, and I had one more question that came up before you were on the line. Um, when, when parents come to pick up the children, how does, how will that work? Do the parents park in the parking spaces? And do you or somebody lead the children out to the parents? Or do the parents come to the, to the, to the garage area, to the daycare area? How, how will the drop-off and pickup work?
I will be at the door, I'm not going outside, I won't leave the children alone. I'll be at the door, but this is something I'll fix with the neighbor school because we may be practice quarantined and social distancing. They may give me other rules to follow. Otherwise, I'll be standing at the door and going out. I won't leave the children alone in the classroom.
Right.
Stand at the door.
Okay, so the parents will normally park their car in the parking space and walk up to the door to drop the child off or to pick the child up, right?
Yes, we'll be wait to send them to pick up. So I know who is coming, who is not coming. Each parent has a schedule to follow, pick-up time and drop time, we respect each other.
Okay. Alright, that, that's good, 'cause you know, one concern I had was any uh, children walking within the driveway area, so that eliminates that issue.
No, no. John, do we wanna make a condition that there be no, no uh, drop-off or pickup um, on the street? For safety reasons? Or is that within our purview?
I just don't see it happening, I guess, um.
Well, people run late, people in a hurry, people do stupid things. That's how accidents occur.
Yeah.
Well, you could always say that the child is not, not released to the parent until they come to the door.
Of course.
But I, I mean, do we want cars idling um, on Washington Street? And doors opening on Washington Street?
No.
That's my, that's, I don't, I, I don't think we should allow that.
Well, that would be a safety uh, problem there.
Yeah, 'cause it really, it really isn't, I'm trying to think of it, it really isn't a safety area to park, even just, I don't recall cars parking on Washington Street, so.
Not right, and not right there either, I just went by it again tonight.
Yeah, so, but we could make a condition that any parents picking up or dropping off children uh, to use the parking spaces on the property and not park on Washington Street.
Yes.
Right, that, okay, alright. And Mr. Curran, do we need to make any condition about an emergency, uh, emergency exit from the playground? Or is that something you would take care of anyway?
I'll take care of that.
Okay.
Um, one more question, John, the age group, the age group of the children.
Yes, but what would?
Two to five years old.
How much?
Two to five years old, two to five.
Well, there's, yeah, there's a, there's two different classifications. Under two years, nine months is institutional and anything above two years, nine months is an educational use. Um, I just don't know if she's gonna be restricted to over two years, nine months.
Yes.
Do you know, Maria?
I know two, there is a toddler to preschool. I do transition from toddler to preschool and preschool will be a training and get ready to kindergarten. From my area, they will be ready to attend kindergarten, the public school.
Okay, so you can, you can have an infant or you can't?
For now, no, because I don't have assistant. By any time I'll be ready and that there is need of that, I'll be available to take.
Yeah, okay, the only other thing I had, John, was um, I think if you just give her the hours of operation, if you're going to specify it, just go seven AM to seven PM.
Yeah.
I, I think that's, that's good.
Yeah, and then lighting for the, for the drop-off pickup area um, that's shielded um, from neighbors um, at the um, at the building and at the parking area.
Okay, Carol, do you have that?
Yes.
Okay.
Good idea.
Hey, um, yeah, and I just, I, I will check out the parking area that they say they just put in. Um, but either way, um, they can probably get going on this right away and, but I'll watch, I'll, I'll watch after it, yeah.
And, and I think the parking area should be striped if it isn't, just to, to indicate the four spaces.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea, yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Curran, does, where this is a commercial use, I guess, does the playground need a ten-foot side setback?
Um, no, I, I, in our bylaws, it really just talks about accessory structures. Um, I don't know that, you could call it an accessory use, but because of the um, the right-of-way that's there, I think it's, it shields the, the neighbors to the left, the bosses plenty. Okay, great.
And it's more than ten feet, the fence, the fence of the playground is more than ten feet from that line anyway.
Yeah, I, I've got um, one, it's about eight feet from the property line, the back left corner.
Oh, is it?
Yeah, but there's only gonna be six kids here.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think it's an issue, okay.
No, I don't either.
Good. I don't know how they're gonna get a car around back, 'cause I didn't see any way to get a car around back, they would have playgrounded. And there's trees on the um, on that easement.
Um, do, do, Marie, do you, do you currently, do you, right now, do you park cars behind your house?
Sometimes.
How do, how do you get there?
I pass the DC uh, um, to my, there is a way from the road to the left to go behind the playground to the back of my house. There is also another way I can have from the other side through my backyard.
So, so you get to your backyard from, like, from the left side of your house?
Yes.
And are you, are you using what's shown on the plan, what's sort of a, a right-of-way that, that the part that is not part of your property?
It's not my property, but because it's open, in case I know, I am not allowed to use it, there is another way to pass to the outside of my house.
So I'm, I'm not gonna make any judgment as to whether you have a right to do that, but.
Yeah, good.
But, you know, you know, it's uh, not, not a concern, I guess, but um, but it, it looks like the existing driveway is big enough, wide enough, that even if you had your personal cars parked alongside, like, on the right-hand side of the driveway where the deck is, like lined up with the deck, you still can get cars in and out of the parking spaces, it looks like to me, 'cause you'd still have more than um, you know, twenty-four foot width, even if cars were there. I guess, Mr. Curran, I, I'll just ask you to kinda check that out too and um, see if there needs, needs to be like any lines on the right-hand side of the driveway to kinda mark that off as parking spaces for, for the owner's use?
Yeah, I'll be happy to.
Okay. Alright, anything further from members of the board? Okay, I'm, I'm gonna close the hearing then and um, entertain. Yes, ma'am, did you wanna say something further?
Yeah, I want to ask the sign board the size, if I want to make the sign board the name of my daycare, how the size will be, the board.
First side of a sign?
Yes.
Mr. Curran, can you address the issue of a sign?
Yeah, um, it can't be more than two square feet.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Can't be more than two, so that's like fifteen inches by fifteen inches?
Yeah, and I will get her a copy of the bylaw unless, unless you want to go over that with her now. Um, bear with me, I will tell you what it says.
Alright, well, wait a second, yeah, that sounds awfully small.
Yeah. Maybe two feet square?
No, it actually talks about smaller than that one, it was just. Two square feet. Um, yeah, but that's just too long. So you, you could allow a larger sign uh, during this hearing? So it says, one sign displaying the street number or name of the occupant on premises, or both, not exceeding two square feet in area. Such sign may be attached to the building, be on a rod or post not more than six feet high and not less than three feet from the street line. Such the sign may include identification of accessory studio or professional office in the dwelling or premise. So, right now, the bylaw is two square feet.
Yeah, I mean, I wouldn't have any problem with two feet square, meaning four square feet.
Yeah, that, that would be the size of a political sign, um, or a real estate sign, just so you know that. Yeah, I, I think that's probably more appropriate in this case.
Mm-hmm.
So four square feet.
Yeah, that's what I said.
Um, I think. Yeah, it says in our bylaw, um, the special permits are required, you don't need a variance for that.
Right, but we don't want her to have to come back for that another time, so.
I think you could allow the sign um, kind of during, at the same hearing. Um, I have no issue with that.
Alright. So Marie, if we approve a sign that's two feet by two feet, is that uh, big enough for you?
I go according to the, the requirement, whatever you tell me, I'm listening. So two feet, two square.
Yeah, and again, I would, I'll, I'll leave it to you to talk to the. I'll, I'll leave it to you to talk to the building inspector about, you know, where that should be in relation to the street and so forth, and, but, uh, well, at least, um, authorize you to go ahead and, and have that as part of this permit.
So four square foot sign, uh, to identify the daycare. That's fine.
Okay. Okay, I think with that, let me, uh, close the hearing and, uh, uh, entertain a, uh, a motion from the board, and then we can just double-check the conditions. Does someone want to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman, now, this is Dick, uh, Richard Blaz, I'll be, I'll be happy to make the, um, motion to approve the petition, um, for the special permit and site plan approval.
All right. And so, conditions, um, hours of operation not to exceed, um, seven AM to seven PM, Monday through Friday. A sign to be allowed up to four square feet.
Um, no drop off or pickup
Right.
on Washington Street.
Right, all, all parents are to use the designated parking spaces to drop off and pick up children and not park on Washington Street. Is there anything else?
The lights.
Oh, yes, lights to be, um, lights at the parking spaces and at the building to be shielded, so it's not to shine on neighboring property. Does anyone have anything else?
Can we determine a decibel level that the kids can't go over?
Well, she did at least locate the playground immediately next to an unoccupied, uh, right of way, which cannot be built on, so that, that's, that's better than if it was on the other side of the house, I guess.
Good, good.
All right, any, any other conditions anybody have?
The parking, parking spaces could be lined to designate where they are.
Oh, right, um. Oh, you mean the owner's parking spaces?
No, the four, the four spaces for your drop off.
Right.
Should be lined.
To be lined, right, to be, to be lined, and, uh, ten by twenty, just to double-check on that. Anything else?
No.
It's not? Okay, I'll, uh, I'll entertain a second to Mr. Blaz's motion.
I'll second it, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, seconded by Mr. Andrews. Any further discussion? Okay, then I'm going to take a roll call. Uh, Mr. Andrews?
In favor.
Okay, Mr. Blaz?
Yes.
Mr. Keeman?
Yes.
Mr. Chandler?
Yes.
And myself, John Gold Rosen, yes, so it's five, five zero in favor, and the special permit and site plan are approved, so good luck to you. And, um, um, is we will, we will be filing the decision with the town clerk within fourteen days, and a copy will be sent to you. There is a twenty-day period after we file it, uh, within which, um, somebody else could appeal the decision. So I'm just alerting you to that in terms of, um, you're going ahead, but I think you can, you know, you can speak with Mr. Curran about that, uh, and determine what you, what you can do going forward and when you can do it. Okay?
Thank you so much.
Thank you, good luck to you. And I'm going to, uh, let me close the plan. Okay, and we're back on the screen. Okay, uh, let me move to other items on the agenda. Uh, the next, we, we have the reorganization of the board on the agenda. I did speak to Fred Gometti a few weeks ago. He was willing to stay on as vice chairman if, if you all decide that you would like to keep the same offices. I can tell you that as of today, I am retired. And, uh, that should, that, that should ensure that, uh, for the most part, I'll be, since I'm scheduling the meetings according to my schedule, um, it should, it should be unlikely that I would miss a meeting, of course, I could always have to recuse myself in some case, but, um, so, anyway, that's information for you. I'll entertain, uh, any nominations or proposals for the offices of the board. Mr. Andrews and Mr. Chandler, do you wish to, uh, I suppose it should be the regular members of the board that participate in this one.
Um, Mr. Chairman, seems like I'm the one that always does this every, every year. I think maybe somebody else should make a motion this year.
Mr. Chandler, Mr. Blaz?
Um, Mr. Chairman, this is Dick Blaz. Um, I'll move to, um, keep the same slate of candidates as we currently have. Unless there are other, unless there are other, um, nominations from the floor.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'll, I'll second that motion.
All right, so that would be myself as chairman, Mr. Gometti as vice chairman, and Mr. Blaz as clerk.
That's correct.
Okay. Any other nominations? All right, then I'll take a vote on that, I think just with the four regular members who are present, Mr. Blaz? Is that, are you in favor of that slate?
Yes.
Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Mr. Chandler? I'm not hearing a, he's holding up a piece of paper. I'm going to guess that says yes on it. Of course, I'm laughing, and you understand, I'm on the telephone, because I don't have a camera or microphone on my computer, so. Uh, and I'll vote yes, so it would be four zero. All right, we have, do people have the minutes handy from the, uh,
Yes.
previous meeting? Let me grab my set here.
Yeah, there's pretty, there's not much to it, so I'll move to approve.
Yeah, well, we have, actually, we have, we did not approve the minutes from the July meeting, July thirteenth meeting, um, because we, I didn't, we didn't, I didn't have them handy anyway, the last one. So, I guess I'll, I'll, I'll read them, you can tell me if you want to act or, or what. Uh, we had case numbers six. Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of all three of those hearings and of the last meeting in one, in one motion.
Okay, so I have, just, I have them here. Uh, from July thirteenth, we had case number six, Maureen Foley, for, uh, that was for the auto dealership. Um, let me just see who was there. Myself, uh, Mr. Blaz, Mr. Chandler, Mr. Cacciatore, and Mr. Keeman. Um, Mr. Andrews wasn't there.
I had, I had disqualified myself.
Oh, right, that's right, that's right, so you're all right, so you're still okay. Um, number seven was fi- five Wild Turkey Lane, which was a, um, an in-law apartment. And case number eight was one eighty-seven Park Avenue, which was, um, oh, that was tearing down an old building, uh, and, wasn't it? Yes, right, that was tearing down an old building, putting up a new building, which they're in the process of doing now, looks like it'll be good. So, uh, let's just, let, let me just take those three, uh, uh, everyone in favor, like, um, all right, we'll, we'll put it all together, those three, we have the general minutes for July thirteenth, and then we have the, um, the minutes for the opening session on, uh, three eighty-two Washington Street from, um, August twenty-fourth, and we have the general minutes from August twenty-fourth. So, Mr. Andrews, uh, you, you've moved to approve all those minutes?
Yes.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Keeman. Um, I'll, I'll read the roll call. Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Mr. Keeman?
Yes.
Mr. Chandler? I'll, I'll take that as a yes. Mr. Cacciatore?
I was in some of those, so.
You weren't, you went on, you went here for those?
Uh,
Okay.
Yeah, for me, um, the auto dealer and the, um, the, uh, in-law.
Okay.
For the park app.
Okay, so that's right. All right, so you're yes for the ones who you were present at, um, and Mr. Blaz, did I already ask you? I did, didn't I?
No, but I'll say yes for the ones that I was, uh, present at.
Okay.
Maybe I'm getting old, but I don't remember the used car, being on the used car.
It was, that's, he wanted to do, uh, he's to sell cars online, did you see the spark?
Okay, oh, it reads automotive, oh, yeah, okay, so, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, yes on all, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, and I'll go yes on all. Carol, will you just, uh, figure out who was on which, on which case, and then, and do it accordingly?
Yes, I am, yeah.
Okay. So I think that's, um, that's everything we have for tonight. The next hearing will be on October twenty-sixth, is that right, Carol?
Yes, we have three that night.
Six, we have ten.
And I have another one sitting here.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Uh, on those three cases for the twenty-sixth of October, uh, we need a list of the butters for Two O Colony Way and site plans for all three cases. We got sent everything but those.
Right, I have
We don't have the list of the butters for Two O Colony Way, and we don't have site plans for any of them.
I have received, I, I asked Carol to get in touch with the applicants or the engineers in each case, to get us PDFs that we can post on the screen. And I got one for Two O Colony Way, I haven't gotten any others, so we'll, we'll work on that, and, uh, and actually, Carol, you haven't even done the butters yet, right?
Yes, I have, I got them the other day.
Okay, okay, but we haven't
For O Colony Way?
Yes, I just got them, Wayne, last week.
All right, I just wanted to make sure that we, we got sent those beforehand.
Okay. And for November, I think the meeting would probably be, uh, Monday, November ninth. Okay. Yeah, Veterans Day is Wednesday, the eleventh, so it's not really a holiday weekend, so.
Yes, it is.
John, any idea what kind of, um, retail store, um, Maureen Foley wants to build at eight sixty-four Bedford Street?
Is that going to be a liquor store, is that correct?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes, that's a liquor store.
A liquor store, okay, I was just wondering.
Are there any licenses available?
I have no idea.
Because you, you only get so many licenses, depending on the population of the town. I think they're all taken.
Well, what about Jamie's?
I was going to say, unfortunately, there will probably be some available licenses for various businesses.
Yeah.
Why?
Good, a little competition around here is nice.
All right, so that's just to alert everybody what's coming up. I have no idea when, you know, when we'll be able to get back into, to town hall, so for now, um, you know, we're going to continue to plan on the, on the Zoom meetings, which isn't my favorite either, but it's, it's working sufficiently, as long as we can take care of people and, you know, get their applications done, that's, that's the main thing, so they can move forward with their projects.
John, do you still have a flip phone?
No, I, I have a smartphone, but what I don't have is a, uh, a microphone and a camera. Um, I just have a desktop, I don't have a laptop.
No, but on your phone, on your phone, you have a smartphone, so, I mean, I'm, I'm on my smartphone right now. I mean, I'm not using my
Oh, yeah?
Yeah, I'm on my, I'm not on my laptop, I'm on my phone.
Oh. And what, and what do you do to keep, you, you put it on a stand or something to keep it stable?
It's leaning against a coffee mug.
All right, I'll, uh, tell you what, I'll, I'll try that next time. I would still, I think I'd still need to get on the computer as well, so I can show plans on the screen.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
But, but that's, but that's what I do now, anyway. All right, I'll try that, and I, I've been wanting to, um, to buy, you know, a microphone and a camera, but they, they were like, you couldn't get one after, after things, the pandemic started up, because everybody was buying them. They were all out of stock. So, I'll, I, hopefully by next time, I'll, uh, try to be set up that way, but I will bear that in mind, Rich, to see if I can do it.
Just threw it out, yeah, I've got my, um, I've got my, um, laptop and my desktop open, too, but, uh, just the Zoom call, see you to do it right on. But you're right, you want, you want to launch a PDF, yeah, I understand.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
I'm ready.
All right, uh, with that, uh,
Congratulations on your retirement.
Thank you.
Pretty good.
Yep, I'm going away tomorrow for a week's vacation in New Hampshire, there, uh, to celebrate, so.
You live in large, John.
Yep.
One of my favorite places.
Good. Okay, uh, I will, uh, I'll just, I guess I'll just take a roll call on a motion to adjourn. Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Mr. Keeman?
Yes.
Mr. Blaz?
Yes.
Mr. Chandler? I'll take that as a yes. And myself, John Gold Rosen, so five, enough, five zero to adjourn. We're adjourned, thank you, everybody, glad we could get this all done tonight.
Excellent.
Good night, all.
Okay, take care, bye-bye.